Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before we move into our regular agenda, I'd like to direct your attention to the screen. Over the past month, we as a community have faced the challenge of coming together in the face of loss. And tonight, we are again called to honor the life of someone who has made a lasting impact on our school district and our community. Ricky Colton Beatle, a former student and employee of Monticello Public Schools, passed away peacefully in his sleep on September 4th. We were lucky to have Ricky work for the district from 2019 to 2022. He worked and positively influenced students in the weight room and through his NDVR training programs. Ricky pushed athletes to become the best versions of themselves, making a lasting impact on the success of the athletes and the entire athletic program. His dedication, his energy, and his passion for helping others will forever be a part of our district. Let us take a moment of silence now to honor his memory and extend our love, our support, and our prayers to his family, friends, and all of those who have been privileged to know him. Thank you. It is now 5:02 PM on the 9th of sad September 2024. I'd like to welcome everyone as I call to order the regular school board meeting of independent school district number 882. Please note that a quorum is present, but we are missing Kathy Zebarth and Mark Branson this evening. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with routine and justice for all. Thank you. First order of business is to approve the tentative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, second by Casey Root. All those that approve the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. Agenda passes for zero. Moving on to our consent agenda under fiscal stability where we have approval of minutes and personnel matters. This is a action item for consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis and seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor for approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes for zero. Moving on to item number six, collaborative connections. We have a resolution for the acceptance of gifts that Superintendent Mr. Olson will discuss.
All right. We have three donors that have brought forth a donation. Central Minnesota Builders Association has brought forward $1,500 to provide equipment that allows for hands-on learning to students on trades, career opportunities, and courses in our secondary schools. Our United Way of Monticello has brought $10,000 for the mindfulness program. We continue to get through the elementaries first, but making sure that our students have tools for regulating their body and understanding when they're experiencing stress. So we've been doing this going on our seventh year. But we are continue to grow the program. United Way has also brought $5,000 for students in need across the district. So that can be anything from personal items to clothes, to backpacks, but just items to help out students when they need that little extra attention. So I bring forth these three donations tonight.
Depends on learning for students, $10,000 from the United Way for the mindfulness program, and $5,000 from the United Way to help with students in need.
Second. Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes for zero. We're gonna move on to agenda item number seven, teaching and learning, and Superintendent Eric Olson will go over an overnight trip request.
Our activities director, Mr. Revnik, brought forth this overnight trip request from our volleyball program, specifically our varsity players. But this request is to stay this coming Friday overnight in order to help the student athletes who are playing one of the last games of the evening and then have to arrive back as one of the first games of the morning. And so it's just a, in order for them to streamline their evening and be able to condense their time together. So it will have some team building impact, but it'll also help make it easier for the team not to have to travel back and forth. So really, it's all about logistics and timing of this overnight trip request. So are there any questions? I know that you've had this for some time, but some questions may have popped up, and I'm here to answer any of those if you have them.
The costs are being covered by the Booster Club?
Awesome. Yep. And they don't miss school. So this isn't as, sometimes we have overnight trip requests that are a little bit more in-depth. And so what Hegley talks about, the Booster Club taking care of this, so there is no cost accrued to the activities department. And then also, this isn't a school night request. This is at the end of the school week. Thank you.
All right. This is an action item.
Make a motion to approve my overnight trip request.
Second. All right. Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes for zero. Now we'll move on to the first week of school recap with Superintendent Eric Olson and Joe Conkle from Hogland Transportation.
So as I invite Joe up, I'm gonna have Gavin cue our first week of the school video, and then I'll meet Joe up at the podium, and we're gonna go over some of the positives and some of the concerns that are going on with transportation across the community. Thank you, Gavin. To encourage the community that are watching live stream, that if there's any concerns that ever come up, while we may be experiencing some wonderful pieces of the educational day, you might be experiencing something that you want to share and have us improve. And so that's why we're here today, is that we wanna talk a little bit about the transportation. Because we've had a big change in the community with school start time change. And we wanna make sure that you're always, we're always here to listen to the positives. We love when people share the positives, but we also wanna be here and give you time. And whether you're right next to us and we're trying to solve a problem together, or you're sharing a problem that exists, we're always here. And it's always best to get your information firsthand rather than going to social media. I really believe that we have people in place to answer lots of questions that happen every day. First week of school, I'm gonna start with Joe. He's gonna talk about some of the positives.
So one of the big things for us this year is that we were looking in our student database in VersaTrans, and one of the things I noticed is we have 4,920 students listed. That doesn't mean we have 4,900 kids. That means we have 4,900 bus stops or people going to stops. It might be a mom, it might be a dad, but there's bus stops. That was 500 more than we had last year. Is it more because people like the start times? Is it more because we have families coming together now? We haven't, we haven't got to the roots of that of why we have 500 more. And I can't believe that we just don't have 500 withdrawals that we don't know about, but kind of exciting that we have more. We're this morning, and I go to Pinewood every morning, and I go to the middle school every morning. I go to Eastview in the afternoon, and I go to Pinewood in the afternoon. But we had every one of our buses to Pinewood on time this morning except for one. And what happens now if there's, there's a hiccup in the route somewhere? Okay, now that one's gonna be a little bit late, and because it's elementary, it compounds on the others. We are getting to the middle school. I think I had everybody here to the middle school this morning. I'd have to look at my sheet, but I think we had one or two that were not by the 8:15 time. I did get a call this morning again from our friends in Buffalo, and they're wondering how this system is working. Because our friends in Big Lake, our friends in St. Michael, our friends in Buffalo, Becker, everybody wants our start times. Everybody wants this. But when, when they called me this summer about, hey, how did you do it? Or how are you gonna do it? I said, let's wait a year. Let's make sure that we get the stuff ironed out for you, and then we'll make it work. Because our first bus left, our first bus left last year at 5:30 in the morning, and our last one got back at 5:00 PM. This year, our first bus is leaving at 6:35 AM, and our last bus, I think I text you at 4:19 this afternoon. So we're cutting off, you know, a good couple hours of transportation time. We have one less midday VOTEC bus. We have one less PM VOTEC bus, which means that the first few days, we sent one bus over and it was full. But I think that the proper thing to do is to run full buses. We don't wanna run buses with 20 kids or 30 kids. So at the middle school, high school, you know, two to a seat is comfortable, three can be done. It's not illegal to put three middle school, high schoolers in a seat. But in the previous years, I think that we've been so good to our kids that we had ones in two seats for our middle school, high school, because we had that time to send everybody out and come back. One of the things that Ms. Green and I had talked about is that we're at, we added symbols for our elementary kids or our kindergarten and preschool kids. So if you happen to see a bus, there's a picture of a heart, moon, star, clover, diamond, horseshoe, or a alligator, a panda, or whatever. So we know if you see a bus with a shape on it, it belongs at Little Mountain. If you see a bus with an animal on it, it belongs at Pinewood. And the same thing for the kids. So when you see on their tag on their backpack that they're a shape, but they're at Pinewood, that's a, it's a wrong mix. And I thought it was very fun that Kristen did catch on. I grew up on Lucky Charms, pink hearts, yellow moons, orange stars, green clovers, blue diamonds, purple horseshoes were my first six shapes that I picked. So Kristen knew. It was kind of fun. We eliminated all of our kindergarten shuttle, well, all but four, because we have our Swan River Nature Base at both our community schools. And part of that is that was our highest discipline throughout the district was our kindergarten shuttle buses. They just never learned how to ride the bus. And when you put 60 people on the bus that don't know how to ride the bus, they're under the seats, they're touching each other, they're licking each other. Just all the stuff little people like to do. And that's okay. We just gotta teach them. But now that we have some buses with K through 12, some with just K through five, I believe we're gonna reduce discipline a lot there. Like I said, we've reduced one hour in the morning for most buses. We do have a St. Cloud route, or actually, we have two that go to St. Cloud, because we have a wheelchair person in St. Cloud. We also have two other people in St. Cloud that we go there to get to bring back. So obviously, I can't, can't get to St. Cloud and back without leaving at 5:40. It just, I can't, that's logistically not possible. But the time saving, I thought everybody'd be so happy that, hey, we're gonna start at 6:30, we're gonna be done at, you know, 8:30. We're gonna start at 2:00, we're gonna be done by 4:15 or whatever. But they're stressed with no break. You know, they were used to having that half hour, 45 minutes between routes, and they're stressed with that. And I think that it'll bring different people into our office for our monthly meetings to... Before, we were always worried about, you know, the pre-trip part of it and the actual physical part of school bus driving. But I think that one of the things I didn't think through well enough is the mental part of this change. I don't know how long you've known that we've done high school bussing and then elementary bussing, but it's been years, years and years and years. And now that we have that swapped and hybrided, you just, I didn't know, or I didn't think through it to say, there's some stress on some bus drivers. And once again, social media is never my friend, but make it. I mean, we're, we're talking through it every day, and it's just a matter of bringing different people into our office to help with meetings and that kind of stuff. Routing there, it's no magic wand. It's time and capacity. The more time, the more time you go out, drop off kids, you come back. The less time, the fuller the buses, and when you have more buses, then it takes longer to drop more kids off. And we knew that. We've talked about that for a year and a half or longer that we've, and I wanna say for the most part, people have, one of the two is shorter AM or PM, one of the two. Not everybody is that way. There are some unfortunates that have, you know, a 60-minute ride or right in there. Our goal is to have everybody at 60 or less. That's what we want. But there is, for the most part, half of it is shorter. I'm not gonna say they're 20 minutes, but it's maybe a 30, 35 versus a 60. Let's see. And we've already reworked some of the routes to accommodate some longer bus rides to get them under an hour. And it's a matter of, okay, instead of going around the block this way, we go around this way, because maybe this way, we drop off the elementary kids first. This way, we drop off the high school kids first, so they get on last in the PM, so let's go this way, because we can drop the elementary kids off first. And one of the ones where we go across the river after we leave the elementary school in the afternoon from elementary, we've said, okay, until the bridge is done, let's offer to the parents that if you wanna get your kids on the Bridge View side, if you meet us at a group stop there, yep, we'll do that. Once the bridge is done, maybe we don't need to do that anymore. Maybe they still like that. We don't know. It's, but it's an offer. We're, we're trying to find solutions for getting people to get off the bus. Last year, we had 18 midday vehicles. This year, we have nine. I don't know where those kids are, why they're, why they are not going, and still, they're gonna come somewhere, I think. But bus driver wise, as much as I like having less midday routes, the bus driver's going, hey, uh, last year I had two middays. What am I gonna do this year? So we'll, we'll work through it, but that's, that's some positives for sure.
And I'll jump in on the current concerns. Yeah, yeah.
So 500 more, you're, so when you started planning new school times, I'm assuming that the 500 new stops weren't corrected?
And I don't even know where these are at. We're still, we're trying to get to school on time, and try to get home on time. So I, and I'm a number guy. I love numbers, but I, I haven't, I don't...
Yeah. Well, that's just, that's, I feel, that's very helpful for me to know. People ask me, it's just, I mean, that's something you can't plan for. If you, as far as the plans you guys did for this, I wanted to, that, I mean, if you have 500 stops, so that's obviously, there are a little...
I think that a big part of it is that, I think that maybe some, maybe middle school or high school kids might not have rode before, but now, because they get to go home with their elementary people, why don't you go home with Johnny and get home that way? So now, it's not that it's another stop, but if you put a second for every kid, which would be pretty quick for those kids to get off the bus, 500 extra seconds has to come from somewhere. So that's...
Okay, so it's 500 more students or stops?
It, it could be a combination of either. I just, in VersaTrans, last year, it says 4,400 and some odd students. This year, it says 4,900. But it could be that Joe has a AM stop here and a PM stop here. We allow one AM and one PM, but we've been really nice about that in the past. This year, we're trying to be more stringent about it, that you get one AM, one PM stop. And when I talked at Eastview, I said, they're bus stops to us. I get that there's a mom and dad stop sometimes, but they're bus stops. So let's have a bus stop at this address. It's not mom stop or dad stop. It's the bus stop. So in VersaTrans, I'm talking the number of students listed in VersaTrans, the routing software. So I don't know, and every kid that, every kid that's in VersaTrans, there are some that chose not to walk or not to ride. So they're non-riders. So it could be that. Because I think I, I think I sent a text or email this morning that Jamie went back to when we first told everybody to register. We need to know who's really riding and who's not riding. We received just over 2,500 emails on that.
So it could be that people registered that have always transported their student before just to make sure that they registered in the system, knowing they were gonna be a non-rider?
It could be, yes.
Okay.
And the scary thing is that we got 2,500, but the scarier thing is that we're missing 2,400. You know, we asked everybody, can you just, this year, we really, really need everybody to tell us. We need updated phones. We need update, are you really riding or not riding? And, but we're missing 2,400 of them. So we feel really good about the 2,500, but, you know, we still had the information from last year, so it's not like we took them out. We just routed. And I would say maybe after October, whenever they, because I got the email today that, of when they're gonna close the bridge overnight again. So they're close. So once we get through that, we can kind of go through that and say, okay, are people really just going, I just registered, but I don't need a bus, or I'm registered, but just in case I need a bus? Because that's what a lot of our people are. We overbook, kind of like airlines do. So I would say on a 77 passenger bus, we probably have 130 kids listed to it. But we know that the middle school, high school kids list, ride at about a 40 or 50% rate. So maybe they all said, just in case, I wanna ride. And maybe they said, oh, because our elementary kids are there, and we want a middle school, high school kid there, we're gonna have them ride with. But they found out, who this bus rides, an hour, we're not gonna do it either way, so you don't have either one.
So currently...
Well, I haven't run into capacity yet.
Currently, right now, what is the longest route that you're aware of?
Not counting St. Cloud?
Correct. Not counting St. Cloud.
Scheduled, there's none over an hour, once you leave your community school.
Okay, so what's the longest route that you're aware of that's occurring right now?
Well, if our, if our last... If our, if our last bus was empty at 4:12 today, and I, I don't know if there was a student in that last half hour of that one, because, you know, we're leaving, um, the elementary schools at 2:30-ish, 2:35-ish. So our, in our world, we want our elementary kids off by 3:30, 3:35-ish. So, and that includes our nature-based Swan River and kindergarten kids. So I, I would say there, there, there's probably some kids that are in that, that hour 20, you know, if you count their shuttle times. But we've, we've had shuttles for years and it's been that way. It's just that it's more prevalent, prevalent now, because it's new routing, it's new times, and everybody looks at the time the school gets out, not what time we leave the school. And the same thing within the morning, when we pick up kids, there's a drop-off window, and let's say we drop off at, Heimwood at 7:25, but they see school starts at 7:55, so they think they've been on the bus that time, but now they're going in and having breakfast at 7:25 or 7:30.
So you guys are starting your clock to count the minute the bus leaves.
That's on my screen. Um, let me pop in, because that's one of the first things. Um, so I'm going to talk about the first and third bullet right now. So in the past, we had shuttles, um, from Eastview, and so, um, we had, uh, our shuttle buses, uh, two went to Pinewood and, and one went to, um, Little Mountain. Two, no, two and three, two and three went, two went to Little Mountain, three went to Pinewood. Um, that, we did not count that time, it was a shuttle time, and we just, it was one of those things, it wasn't like we were doing it on purpose, it just was one of those things that we've done for seven years, where the community schools, that's where your time started, is from that community school, because that was their bus. And so now we have, you know, more, we have shuttling going on right now, um, and it's nature base and, and, um, uh, Swan River, and then we, so you, you, you still have shuttles going on, but you, what people have noticed is that they're taking the time that school gets out, and so that hour 20 has probably been here for many, many years, um, but, um, it wasn't prevalent, because the shuttle wasn't counted for. So we didn't realize that until all of a sudden we get to this, um, this new science that we're trying to create, we're trying to develop new patterns, new science, everything's new for, for, as you can hear, that's what, how I would summarize Joe's thing. Um, his, as he talked about the, the positives, he also was basically showing us that all the data points and, and the things that they could predict as norms, um, are all new now. The norms that, we have to establish new patterns of, of, uh, students' behavior. And so, um, so yeah, some of the routes are still too lengthy, and I think it's really important for us to be able to talk about that with everybody, that's why we're doing this right now. Um, and that's, uh, why, um, we want to also, as you'll see here in the last slide, but introduce town hall meetings. But I do think it's really important to just look at that, the, the construction too. We have to get through a, um, a, a period of time where we can see, um, where we can work with the people who have problems. We, we don't want people to be quiet, we want people to come forward with very specifics. We're diving into those specifics, but the bottom line is anybody who crosses 25 or anybody who has to go across the bridge is, is going to experience delays. It's mathematical. If I leave at 4 o'clock and get on, uh, Broadway here, it's going to take me 15 minutes longer to get to Broadway than it used to. These are all mathematical pieces that we're trying to work through. And, um, I, I feel like, uh, we want to hear people's concerns over the next month, but as you can see, we've got a company here that's transparent, they're willing to stay, sit here and talk about the things that are working, and, and hopefully we have a, a school organization, a school board, school administrators that are going to continue to look at every problem and try to fix them throughout the, um, the, the construction period and then after the construction period. I would say the project manager of the Department of Transportation has been phenomenal to work with. Um, just Friday, they realized that the pedestrian lights were still at their same temple on Broadway, and so they've lessened those, um, so that we can, um, have, uh, so that it's not stopping traffic for as long. So there's a lot of little things that we have to keep pushing on, um, and, and working together, but, um, I know both Joe and I have really appreciated the families that come to us and, and they, they come to us with that disposition of, of problem solving and knowing that we're going to do whatever we can as a school district to help them solve their problems.
On, on the Highway 25 thing, um, the project manager, once we got to times that were consistent, I said, I need longer green north and south from 2:30 to 2:40. Okay, I'll see what I can do. And now we had 20 cars going through that time, we got 40. So, I mean, that's, that's very nice that, you know, they were able to accommodate us that way.
And then maybe the last one that we haven't, um, you know, shared as a concern, um, yet here throughout, uh, I guess Joe did, but he talked about the pre-K through grade 12 on some buses, and we've talked about that for a year and a half, and, and when you look across the state, um, you know, school districts have this type of format, and really, um, as Joe alluded to, your younger students data-wise would be the ones that are having the most discipline infractions. I mean, our older students really should be good role models, and what I've talked with families about is, is, uh, buses really represent family structure. You have people from all different levels within a family, and that works, and it works really well. And so we can make this work, but it's our mindset at home, it's our mindset at school, and it's that positive spin. It's, it shouldn't be, we shouldn't be scared of, of, of teenagers, I mean, they're amazing. You, you get into classes or you get on the court or field and you watch the things that they're doing, and they're absolutely, um, amazing leaders, and we have to draw upon that, um, and use that, uh, uh, over time. We're just, the second week, and I say second week, but if you realize, we had a day later start too this year, and so our students didn't start till Wednesday, and so we had only, we've only practiced, um, the, um, whole district three days now.
Because we didn't have kindergarten.
Well, kindergarten at Thursday, Friday and Monday now. So our whole district has only been doing transportation three days. This is not abnormal to have people concerned, it, it just, people have new concerns, and I think that's really important as a school board to understand. We get a lot of emails at the beginning of the year, every year, but everybody wants to attribute it to the school start time change. And really, if we just start breaking down the school start time change, what, what it's meant for me is Sherri Holmgren from HR and myself stay late until we get into a pattern where our kids get dropped off at the time they're supposed to, uh, as far as length of bus ride. And, um, the first week, days of school, we have not been able to leave the school because the last bus isn't getting home until after 6:00 on the first week. I know you said 5:00, but the first week of school, it's been after 6:00. We have students getting home after being up from who knows how long, and our buses weren't able to get through on a normal day without construction until after 6:00. And so when I'm getting a, um, a text at 4:18 on last Friday, it was 4:18, today it was, uh, 4:19, like, we're literally, like, that's a, that's an, an hour and 45-minute difference of, of, um, time that our buses aren't on the road, our kids are getting home to their homes to be with their families. And so it's, it's challenging, but there are also so many good things that, um, I can already see, and I do believe that we're going to be able to see a lot more, um, positives to be able to add, uh, to Joe's list as time goes on. But I'm, we're really sticking to the student focus, we're not bringing up any of our staff, um, positives right now, I really want to stick to students. I want families to feel heard, um, and so it's really important to know that we're not waiting till after construction to have town hall meetings, we'll have two before the construction's done, uh, but it, we should, because we should be in very good patterns for what we have to deal with right now by, um, by the end of September. And so continue as families, if you have challenges that you're seeing in comparison to what you've experienced in, in, uh, previous years, please continue to contact both Holglands and myself, and we will, um, look into every email and make sure that, uh, we, um, you know, to, problem solve to, uh, try to come up with a better solution.
Is that correct, that the second one is in the morning, at 7:00 AM to 7:45 AM?
It is.
Just wanted to verify that.
And that, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, you can go.
And that was my first off, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we've done some serious problem solving, and because a 6:00 PM drop-off, obviously to you guys is unacceptable as well as everybody else, and we understand that this is a new system, and we've got the bridge to consider and some other things that maybe we weren't even able to think about or process until we were actually implementing the plan. And so what I hear, Joe, is that the goal is, is that the students, from the point when they leave, like, let's say Pinewood, you know, Pinewood Elementary, to when they get dropped off at home, the goal is in contractually one hour, right? And so, um, what I love was that, Eric, you mentioned for them to reach out, and so if the public does have concerns, I do urge them to reach out to Holgland Transportation to let them know, because you only know what you know. So if, you know, you don't know if you've got a student on there that's too long, and they might have to work through some issues, because I know on Friday even, um, we were talking about a student that had reached out and was on, and then we reworked it, and so I think it's important for the public to know that the school and Holgland want what's best for the students, and so if there's concerns, we want you to reach out, so that way we can problem solve and figure it out.
I, I would say one other thing that, uh, Eric and I have learned or talked about, and through my umpiring and officiating, the, the stuff that I learned is that you observe, you make the call, you make the signal, and in the transportation business, we were so good at it for so long, we just made the change right now, made the change right now. So what, we would just send letters home tonight, we'd make the change tomorrow morning. Well, now, we did that, we sent the letters home tonight, the next morning we go, oh, those kids didn't ride last night. So now we got a better system, because Devaney can send out messages for us right now. So we can, we can still get the, the quicker response, but maybe it's like the umpiring and officiating, you go, all right, I want to fix it right now, I want everybody to have a shorter ride, but I need to take a breath. Let's see, if I change this bus route around and make a change, who does that really impact? And, you know, making compromises, say, well, yeah, you can come do that. Um, one example of that is a family wanted their student dropped off not door-side. I don't like it, it, it doesn't feel good. And what was interesting to me is my son, Adam, said, Dad, it's not just that kid, even though the parents think that's okay to have their kid at risk, it's all the other kids on the bus that are going to be, if something were to happen, it's those kids that, that we're trying to protect also, not just the one parent that says, that's okay, you, my kid can cross this busy road. Because we try not to do that. VersaTrans tells us, are you sure you want to do this? And you got him right, yes, it's okay to let him cross. So it, it's that kind of stuff that when you have, you know, Adam there and me there and Jamie there, we all think of different stuff, and that's what I, I like, and I think that through the umpiring stuff, just got to take a break, take a, take a breather and go, okay, I know I want to fix it right now, but let's take a breath and see what happens.
Yeah, I think that's really where we're coming from, is we want to make sure that we're making progress and making improvements, and we don't just stop and on one day and say, oh, this is all, this is the best that we can have, or this is the best it is. Uh, there, we, we understand there's the bridge, bridge construction, the traffic, um, but yeah, whatever you guys can do, we'll, we'll work with you, um, to Eric and Jamie's point, you know, we just want to support all the, all the, uh, students, get everyone home, get them safe, uh, but we also want to make sure that we're meeting the contractual obligations for the hour. Uh, and, and maybe, I, I don't know, maybe some better communication around when that time starts, you know, versus is school out or when the bus leaves on there, so.
And remember, it's, it's time and capacity.
Yep.
People can have shorter routes, and it's easy for me to say, we just buy more buses, buy more drivers, but you know as well as I do, you, you just don't have just drivers around, but you can do it, I mean, um.
Yeah, we, we want to support you on there, we, we want to help, so.
I mean, it's, it's interesting, I mean, I, in the, we're trying to show and share as much as, um, that we've had come up, but we've had a couple of solutions, um, and sometimes you present solutions to families, and, um, sometimes those solutions, um, come at a cost where maybe we'd have, like, um, so, um, one of the child, like a, a child in kindergarten get home at one time, and then the child in the elementary at another time, um, and maybe it's like a 15-minute, um, disparity or difference. And sometimes families don't want that 15 minutes, and so, uh, uh, so you can think of a way to make things better, but then all of a sudden you call 13 or 15 people, and, um, only two out of those, um, was it 15? Change, you don't want that change, so like, everything has its nuance, and, and we can come up with a lot of really good ideas, and, and we are coming up with a lot of good ideas, and sometimes people, that doesn't fit too. So it's really important, um, just like anything, it's important to make sure that we get all the facts, um, presented and, and be able to share that, and that's why, that's why we're here today, is to be able to, uh, share what we know so far after, um, the third full day of pre-K through grade 12, uh, being transported. And, um, we're not going to stop this type of open transparency and communication, you guys deserve that as a board. You took a, um, you know, a, a, an opportunity to have different, uh, school start times because of all of us working together, and we want to continue to work together to make this work, because we, we like the school times for many reasons, today we're just focusing on the students, but, uh, hopefully over time, families also learn to love that for their, through their children's eyes.
So just out of curiosity, how, how close are you to adding another bus to your, to your route? I, I guess, when do you make that decision to say, now it's time to add one more bus or two more buses, and I, I know it's already day three of the, or day four?
I could say in the past, when we had, and I don't, I don't remember how long ago, but we had some construction that was really causing havoc for the first month of school, so they said, let's just add a couple buses for the first month or the first two months. Um, and we did that. Um, I don't, and I would really like to have at least a couple weeks under our belt to see, really, how, how close are we to the hour? You know, and I, I don't want to use the bridge as an excuse, because I, I knew the bridge with construction was coming for years, I just didn't know it was going to be 40 minutes someday. So the other day we go, okay, we'll just go 10 minutes early, well, that, the bus was, the buses were coming 20 minutes late to Pinewood, literally 20 minutes late, the next day we started 10 minutes early, and they arrived at Pinewood eight minutes early, before we could even drop off, not even 20 minutes late from the last, so the window, so there's a magic window in there, getting across that bridge or getting through town, that it's not even a bridge, it's sometimes it's 25, it's sometimes, um, when you got to get from our office down 25 to Broadway, or however you get there, and bus drivers are pretty sneaky, if you want to ever know the shortest distance between, or the quickest distance between two points, follow a bus, because they know the quickest way from our place to someplace else, I'll guarantee you that.
And I appreciate the creativity, and I don't think any of us want you to make any hasty decisions. I think we would rather have us make educated decisions and, um, and I think that there's no doubt that what's right for the students is on the forefront of your mind, and you're very passionate and dedicated to our district, and so I appreciate that, and I know as we continue to work together, but also the public's got to notify us and not just complain to your neighbor, but, you know, actually let the bus company know that there's some, uh, concerns, that then we can work through them.
I think the problem they said from the public has been that, I mean, we all know what it affects things, and I think they, they, they have 30 seconds, so, and they, they immediately assume that, uh, it's going to change, and that way, we, that's going to be done. And I think, from what I've, obviously, I know there have been a lot of solutions to help a lot of families, and I think if they understand that, we're continually trying to help them, and trying to find solutions that are best for them, I think that's, once they understand that, then I think they're in a good spot, so.
So Board Member Hagley, myself, um, and Joel Kunkel have all talked about social media. I urge everybody, I'll say this at any time, any place, but please don't use social media, please call one of us, email us if it's about transportation, we are the two people, um, or Jamie Crick from Holgland, but that is the only way to truly, um, you get to the bottom of a problem. But I would encourage you, if you have a problem at school, like, or lunch, those issues go through the school system and, and call the people, if you have, you know, call the teacher, if it's a teacher-related question, classroom question, call the principal, if it's a principal-related question, call the director of nutrition services, if it's a director of, of, if it's a, um, nutrition service question. But we see so many people go to social media and, and they'll post a picture of a tray or something like that and have a question about food, and, and it ends up being 100% false, but yet it's, a whole bunch of people are taking their energy to respond to things that are 100% not true, and that, that's just not good, it's not a hu- healthy way to do business. Once again, I, it wasn't on the agenda of the slide, but we've heard three people say it, I just want to emphasize, social media is not your way to get, uh, healthy answers.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, thank you, Joe, for coming. Appreciate the presentation and the update.
I mean, I got to go too, so I wouldn't.
Absolutely, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, on to agenda item number eight, our innovation. Uh, onto agenda item number eight, our innovation and leadership. We would like to welcome to the podium, Ms. Tina Burkholder, Director of Business Services, to review the preliminary property tax levy information.
Skip the, the 7C.
I'm back here. I can, I got it.
Oh, haha. Just kidding. We're going back to item C, School Board Recognition with Superintendent Eric Olson.
All right. So September is, uh, School Board Recognition Month, and I just would like to get a, give a plug for our six school board members. Um, the countless hours that they put in, um, every single week is absolutely, um, it's crazy to me, um, but I have never felt, uh, more supported from a board of six people, uh, come together as, as voted officials, um, every week, whether it's a meeting that you see here in public at this table, um, or whether it's, uh, work behind the scenes to uphold the integrity of policy and budget across the district. And these six individuals need to be commended for, um, their high quality service, uh, to our community. So it's School Board Recognition Month here in September, and I just want to, um, uh, thank these six personally at a board meeting so that, uh, they know how appreciated, um, how appreciated they are and how much I value their service.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Now we're moving on to item number eight, Innovation and Leadership. We welcome Ms. Tina Burkholder, Director of Business Services, to the podium to review our preliminary property tax levy.
Good evening, Gavin. If you could bring up the PDF that's linked in the cover sheet. Um, so in state statute, MDE has to give all the state, uh, school districts their property tax levy report by, um, September 8th of each year. So the business day prior to that was Friday, September 6th. And at 5:16, the Monticello report was on there Friday night. And somebody at MDE was describing this that Wednesday before, that it's like you're trying to get concert tickets and keep refreshing the page to see, is it up yet? Is it up yet? Is it up yet? Finally, at 5:16, it was up. Um, so I wanted to go over some of the preliminary highlights with the report. There's still some corrections that need to happen with the state. Um, but with our general fund levy, the overall levy decreased 132,000 or a minus 1.22%. If we could blow that up a little more, Gavin, um, so people in the audience can see it a little better. Um, some of the changes between last year and this year payable, the voter approved referendum decreased, um, 160,000. From what I could tell with the prior year levy, more adjustments were made with inflation because our voter approved, um, levy has inflation on it. So, um, the inflation amounts were adjusted in last year's levy and we don't have quite that much as inflation adjustments happening in payable 2025. In our operating capital levy, that increased 60,000 as of, uh, the first report and a lot of that has to do with equalization with the property values increasing. So more is coming in the form of levy versus aid. And then unemployment insurance saw a decrease, um, and this had to do with a negative adjustment. Um, in 2022, our unemployment expenses were 86,000 and in FY '23, our unemployment expenses were 50,000. And so you have to guess ahead of time what your unemployment expenses were. So I guessed around that 85, 90,000 range. So a lot of that has to do with the negative adjustment, um, from that year. Cause at, once it's all said and done, they go back and true up what you report to the state. And this is just regular unemployment. It's not the summer term unemployment. You can't levy for that. I think there's some lease levy amounts that probably still need to get into the system with like the co-op and Rite Tech and things like that. So I think there might be some increases there once more reports come in. On the community service fund levy, that decreased 93,000. A lot of that has to do with, it doesn't include our, um, childcare disabled levy amount in there. That's missing 110,000. So once that's in there, the overall levy should be around 430,000 or an increase of 4.06%. Debt service levy is decreasing 42,000 or a minus 1.84%. Um, everything kind of looks normal from what I can see at first glance. So overall, the levy, like I said, it's going down 268,000 or one point, a minus 1.84%. Once some of those adjustments get in there, it's probably going to be maybe still lower than last year by a little bit, or maybe close to a zero change. So the levy report is 39 pages. The first 30 are all calculations based on enrollment, property values, equalization, what's aid, what's levy, looking at adjustments for the last two years and filtering them all in. So we'll go into more of a deeper dive at a work session, once more reports come in and we get better gauge of what's real and what's not. And then, um, at the 23rd meeting, 25th, 23rd, um, it'll be, um, to ask for approval on the levy and we always approve to the max to make sure that if there are any errors or anything, that we get what's the full amount and then you can always adjust it down in December.
So will we understand this, if I'm understanding this correctly? So basically when we put the, uh, lead to the community, it'd be pretty similar to what was that last year, correct?
Nope. Like I mentioned, last year, that was a one-time adjustment that happened because two years ago, we gave back debt service levy. And so that swung back up last year to normal levels, to 3.3 million versus, I think it was 2.5 million, somewhere in there. So our debt service levy is that 3.2, 3.3 million.
This year when they look at their taxes from the county and from the district, it should actually decrease in their.
It's totally dependent on their property values and everything else that's going. It's not just what the school levy is doing. If their property values are increasing, they could see any increase.
But the school portion, that line item is driven off this one.
Still, it's depending on what their property value is doing.
So I guess what I'm asking is that what value input that we received last year when it was higher, or will constituents then say, oh, this is better than what last year?
So I don't, I don't know how to say it differently. So if our levy is 14 million and Excel is a large property owner in our district and they are advocating, I think, for another property value decrease. So they have a large portion of our debt service, or our overall levy. So if their levy, if their value is going down, it means their property tax portion is going down. And so the, the taxes are going to be pushed towards the other values. So it's, just because our levy is going down, doesn't mean everybody's is going down. It's based on property values.
Any other questions for Tina? All right, Tina, as always, thank you. Appreciate it.
This is a tax question. I mean, we don't usually, but yeah, but just like you go and be ambassador for us would be great.
So who approves Excel Energy's property value going, like who? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, sorry. Um, so who would approve Excel Energy's property value going down and thus their property taxes going down and thus the levy amount that would go towards the school district, like?
The county and the state.
County and the state do that? Okay. All right.
I knew you had a question that would be really good for the public, anybody watching. So thank you.
Any other questions for Tina? All right. Thank you, Tina. All right. Now we are moving on to agenda item number nine, Safe and Healthy Culture. We'd like to welcome up Mr. Rob Danicker, Director of Human Resources, to go over first read of policies.
Can you talk about all these policies tonight?
Yep.
It gives you being all productive over there.
All at once.
Acting Chair Seaman, member of the board, Superintendent Olson. Uh, as, uh, Board Member Hagley mentioned, we, uh, we were incredibly, um, uh, efficient with our time this evening. Um, and that's a little bit, we were efficient, but we actually had some easy stuff to go through as well. So actually, maybe I'll just jump in right there. So, um, what we have tried to do is to create a, uh, rotation of, um, uh, policy review. And so, uh, basically we've split up the nine sections of policy review into three years. And so three, um, different sections, uh, each year, over three years will get us to those nine total sections. And so, uh, we delved into that tonight, starting with the 200, the 200s. And so you see a bunch of 201, 202, et cetera. And so many of those, there weren't substantial changes and we were able to go through those quite quickly. So, um, that's why there's so many on tonight and, uh, likely we'll have a little bit of the same for a little while here until we exhaust through all of our, um, our cycle updates. Um, however, the first one on the list for tonight, 522, uh, this is Title IX Sex Nondiscrimination Policy and Grievance Procedure, and it's also followed up by 522 Addendum. Uh, this is, um, in response to the federal government's, uh, Title IX, um, guidelines, which were updated as of August 1st, um, and have been somewhat in the news because they have, um, broadened the scope of Title IX, um, possible Title IX investigations in terms of who is, um, eligible and then also, um, uh, in terms of the frequency that rises to the level of an investigation. So, um, so as a policy committee, we talked a little bit about the fact that we have existing policy on this, which reflects the previous guidelines or the previous, uh, federal government, requirements. And so really in terms of adopting 522 and 522 Addendum, it's not so much that we're agreeing or disagreeing with those federal requirements. It's simply that we are, um, if we have a Title IX complaint that comes forward, we're playing off the same sheet of music as the federal government is right now, uh, whether or not we agree with, uh, the direction that that's gone. Um, and so 522, the, the, uh, the general, the, the nondiscrimination policy grievance procedure simply lays out general statement of policy, uh, notice of nondiscrimination. Uh, it's fairly succinct. Um, and then it's more broadly, uh, titled, the title line process is more broadly articulated in the addendum. Um, and it says, "The school district has adopted these grievance procedures that provide for the prompt and equitable resolution of complaints made by students, employees and other individuals who are participating or attempting to participate in its educational program or activity, or by the Title IX coordinator alleging any action that would be prohibited by Title IX or the Title IX regulations." Any questions from the board on 522 and 522 Addendum? All right. Moving on, next one up, uh, this is, starts our sequence of, um, cycle updates. So 201 is legal status of the school board. "The purpose of this policy is the care, management and control of the schools is vested by statutory and constitutional authority in the school board. The school board shall carry out the mission of the school district with diligence, prudence and dedication to the ideals of providing the finest public education. The purpose of this policy is to define the authority, dual, uh, duties, excuse me, and powers of the school board in carrying out its mission." And there is no substantial changes on this one. Any questions on 201 at all? All right. Seeing none, we'll keep going. On 202, uh, this is School Board Officers. Uh, "The purpose of, uh, this policy is school board officers are charged with the duty of carrying out the responsibilities entrusted to them for the care, management and control of the public schools of the school district. The purpose of this policy is to delineate these responsibilities." Again, no substantial changes on this one. Any questions on 202? Okay. 203, Operation of the School Board Governing Rules. Uh, "So the purpose of this policy is to provide, uh, governing rules for the conduct of meetings of the school board." Um, again, fairly succinct, no major changes here. Any questions on 203? All right. Moving forward, uh, 201, or excuse me, 203.1, School Board Procedures, Rules of Order. "The purpose of this policy is to provide specific rules of order to conduct meetings of the school board." Again, uh, fairly straightforward, no major changes on this one. Any questions on 203.1? Okay. Next one is a new one, uh, 203.2. And so this is a new model policy brought forward by MSBA and we're recommend, recommending it for adoption locally here in Monticello as where, as well. Uh, "The title is Order of the Regular School Board Meeting. The purpose, uh, of this policy is to ensure consistency in the order of business at regular school board meetings. Um, of note, uh, in Article 3 of the policy under Order, Item A, it does state that the school board shall conduct an orderly school board meeting. The school board will, at all regular school board meetings, follow an agenda order similar to..." And so that broad language allows for some modification and, um, adoption as we would locally see fit. Any questions on 203.2? Okay. Hearing none. Moving forward to 206, this is titled Public Participation in School Board Meetings, Complaints About Persons at School Board Meetings and Data Privacy Considerations. "The purpose, uh, is as stated, the school board recognizes the value of participation by the public in deliberations and decisions on school board, school district matters. At the same time, the school board recognizes the importance of conducting orderly and efficient proceedings with opportunity for expression of all participants' respective views." Um, and it goes on to say, "The purpose of this policy is to provide procedures to assure open and orderly public discussion, as well as to protect the due process and privacy rights of individuals under the law." And again, no major changes on this one. Any questions? Okay. And I should actually mention, um, on 206, um, uh, we do have, um, on our website, we do call out our procedures for initiating citizens' comment. And in 206, under, uh, Article 6, Procedures, Section A, Number 8, um, it does, the school board does reserve the right to impose such other limitations, restrictions as necessary in order to provide an orderly, efficient and fair opportunity for those present to be heard. And so what is on our website is slightly more restrictive than what's in policy, but that's a good thing. We want to have the ability to, um, uh, as called out by that language that is read, we want to have the ability to frame our experience locally as we would need to. All right. Um, on 507, uh, so this was, uh, these were brought forward, uh, largely because MSBA provided updated, um, model drafts, uh, following the conclusion of the legislative session. Um, in the news the last couple of years, uh, has been, um, school resource officers. And so 507 and 507.5, uh, were revisions brought forward by, uh, timely because of the updated statute. So the purpose of 507 is, uh, to describe limitations on the use of corporal punishment and prone restraint upon a student. Are there any questions from the board on this one? Okay. And then the related 507.5, School Resource Officers. "The purpose of this policy is to establish the contractual duties and training requirements of a school resource officer." And as a policy committee, we did have, um, pretty good conversation about the fact that, uh, there's some leeway provided in the state statute regarding school officer training. And that's something that we can work with our, um, our partners at Wright County Sheriff, um, to develop a more broad and consistent understanding of the training that SROs go through before coming, uh, to serve at Monticello schools. Any questions on either 507 or 507.5?
I actually have a question on 507.5.
Yes.
Substitute resource officer. Very often.
I would say every year it probably happens at least, you know, we have two officers. Um, it happens maybe one time a year, you know, it could be a, um, medical leave, could be, um, a, um, school resource officer on a, on a maternity or paternity leave. So it happens maybe one time a year for a short amount.
Say that they're obligated to complete their credential. It's, uh, less than 60 days.
So that, that was, that was actually the largest portion of our discussion.
And I did send an email to, um, Sergeant McGill tonight to see what, um, you know, what, what do they require their officers? So, um, from my understanding, I don't know that we've ever had somebody not trained, but I want to verify that. Um, so I, we sent an email tonight.
I think it's probably in our best interest to have, even if it's a substitute resource officer that is trained in, in what we will require for.
Yeah. That was probably 90% of the conversation on that one. And how do we, that's where Eric was talking about, um, you know, working with, uh, the sheriff to make sure we get someone that already has had the train, so we're not just grabbing someone and throwing them in, so.
And our discussion was too, is besides the policy that we have. And our discussion was too, is besides the policy that we have, having more stringent criteria at the district level, separate from the policy and making sure that everybody's trained.
So that would be in the contract then with resource officers, so.
I was able to share with the group at policy that it was pretty neat to watch Wright County. Our Wright County was actually the training hub for Central and, and up to the north, north, the whole Northland of training. So the training that last spring was done here at Monticello Mills School, this boardroom right here. So I know, I've been able to take part in and watch what school resource, resource training looks like. So I, I have a little bit more firsthand information and was excited to be part of that. But I think the policy committee and you and Jeff bring up great questions, is what, what's really going on with some of those, that, that training when it is for a substitute? And I just want to make sure that even a substitute gets that training. So we'll, we'll see. I don't, I think they always have, but we'll find out what comes back and I can let you guys know in my Friday communication.
I think obviously it works because we've been very fortunate to have great, it's our offer. Had a lot of really good ones, so.
If I could just clarify, just, we've been talking about substitutes. So of course, we're talking about substitute law enforcement officers. So anybody subbing as an SRO is already a licensed law enforcement officer. Just want to point that out for clarity for our public. But the nuance would be the specific, specific training to be an SRO, which is very powerful training, as Eric mentioned. And so that would be very valuable. And for what it's worth, Board Member Hagley, we, that's, as Board Member Root and others brought up, we did have a good conversation about this and I did point out to the committee that, that sixty days is actually more restrictive than even, for instance, in teacher world, right? And so it takes ninety days to be, to be given credit for a full year of service as a teacher, but there's a stay in the statute that if you're essentially full service for a year in SRO world, that's sixty days. And so more restrictive. So I do appreciate that. Okay, and so, and then again, no action for tonight. However, this is an opportunity for the public and also the board at large to have their first review of these and we'll come back in two weeks for the second read.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Daniker. And as always, like Rob mentioned, we have ample time now to review and go through it too and ask any more questions on what we want to do more in addition. So, all right. Now we're moving on to Item Number Ten, which is adjourning. I'd like to note that our next board meeting will be Monday, September 23rd. For those that would like to attend and ask if there's any additional comments or business from any other board members at this time? No? Okay, then our agenda's complete. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Second. Moved by Jeff Hagley, seconded by Melissa Curtis, we are adjourning at 6:08 PM and we will have a work session to follow. We'll take a brief break for five minutes and we'll come back together for a work session. Thank you.